...of November 16th, 2015. We do have a forum called a meeting order and let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Mayor, for a meeting overview, you have something to address?
Okay, I would just like to start the meeting with a moment of silence in honor of the tragedy that happened in France. And as President, I sent these to our friends and neighbors from the sister cities. So if we could just take a moment, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda. Approval of the agenda is posted in the course of the open meeting on here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council on the agenda?
Mr. President, I move we approve of the agenda.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock. They approved the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes. Copy of the minutes for special work session meeting of November 2nd, 2015, and the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2015, and the recess meeting of November 4th, 2015 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Canofla, second by Councilman Goldgren. Approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Approved check numbers 92, 995 through 93, 098 totaling $194,703.8. Mr. Bushick?
Page 1. Yes, at the bottom of page 1. Is that type of thing not only part of 40,000, 42,500 that we paid to the United States?
This was a special work since there was a special hold on a dangerous dog that we were required by the courts to hold for a specific period of time. And then the dog later was court ordered to be euthanized. And so this is kind of a special situation over and above what our agreement with them is.
So we get reimbursed in the courts then for that or no?
We have, there is restitution whether or not we'll collect, but there is incentive for restitution.
Okay.
I was wondering that the library belts, disc, pad, and wheel flap from Napa, which is odd, hold up. What would the library need that for?
They needed some belts for the furnace, I believe. Sometimes when we have a lot of descriptions, we can't be specific, otherwise it ends up cutting two checks. So we have to kind of generalize and put in a basic description.
Page 2. Building inspections, $21,271.86 for October. What's that?
We got, we had revenue in for a couple of large permits, Min Dodge Shop, I believe, and Central Minnesota Renewables, maybe was the other big one. So he gets a percentage of the revenue.
Okay. And annual bucket truck inspection, $1,146.92.
We're required to have an annual inspection on our bucket truck and then any maintenance items that need to be done to the truck, they will complete that as well.
So this is part of maintenance fee too? Okay. Otherwise, it's just inspected for that cost, seems a little hefty.
I tell you, that's right where it is. Even if it was a private company that needed one certified.
Kind of goes along with engineering fees, I suppose.
Similar getting in one of those buckets that are not.
Page 3.
The survey report, didn't we already buy that property?
Yes, we did buy the property, but there were some additional survey costs involved and the engineers asked us to pay for the, this additional amount and then that will be reimbursed under the grant as well.
Thank you. That's always nice to hear reimbursement. Page 4. These water utility, what type vendors, are them forgiven fees or?
No, they're refunds of overpayments or near deposits when, for final bill account.
Okay. Page 5. Page 6. Want to thank you, Lori, that somehow you managed to know all these things because there's a lot of issue. I mean, a belt and a lot of gear. I mean, something like that might've went over my head. So that's pretty good though. Anyway, I would make a motion to approve the checks that Jeremy listed earlier at $194,703.8.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bills are approved. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, we have none. Consent agenda, animal control report, October 2015 received. Bar stream rebuild, ratify and confirm. Building department report, October 15, or October 2015 received. Fire departments report, October 2015 received. HBC commission minutes, November 2015 received. Causing redevelopment authority minutes, October 2015 received. Morrison County Attorney's prosecution reports, September and October 2015 received. Police Department report, October 2015 received. Public Works Department report, October 2015 received. Recycling courts, August and September 2015 received. Waste water treatment facility report, October 2015 received. Water treatment facility report, October 2015 received. What's the wish of the council on the consent?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Councilman Hanson to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Flags, well number eight improvement, drill wells. Greg?
This past fall, we, we applied for a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of $6,507 to go towards the improvements on well number eight. I'm happy to say we did receive that, that grant. We went out for bids to do those improvements. We received three bids. They ranged from $12,950 from Trail Wells out of Wake Park to the North Star Drilling at the amount of $20,715. Tonight, we're recommending four to the low bid in the amount of $12,950 from Trail Wells out of Wake Park to grow the annular space at well number eight to be charged to the source water protection grant and the water improvement grant for the minimum dollar funds.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Alderman Hercock to approve well number eight. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Full business ordinance number 81-6 series amend city chapter code five sign regulations. Reintroduce, adopt. Ben, Greg, Tony?
Mr. President, if I may, I'll take the lead on this one or the start on this one. If you recall, back on November 2nd, we introduced this particular ordinance or drafted this ordinance. After hearing public information from that, from that council meeting, we had some amendments to the, to the ordinance. We brought this to the planning commission where we had a public hearing on the ninth where the planning commission recommended approval with the amendments to the, to the ordinance. In a nutshell, and I'll let Mr. Olson here kind of go over the details of the signed ordinance, but in a nutshell, what we, what we've got here is the, the changes in the ordinance pertain to illuminated signs. So if the, if the signs are lit up specifically in a residential area, there's a wattage basically equivalent to a 60 watt bulb and how bright those, those signs can be. Obviously, they can't interfere with the neighbor, they can't shine the neighbor's window, that type of stuff. As well as the ability for a residential property owner to pull a 45 day permit for an illuminated sign such as the one I spoke of earlier. They're allowed basically for 45 days or one year. And they're only allowed one per calendar year so they can have a sign lit up at any point in time for that. There is some changes in there of the language in the B3 district. If they are within 100 feet of Trump Highway 10 and 371, they are allowed to have a freestanding pole sign up to 300 square feet as is currently drafted. I did look at some information on the city's code in terms of, because we kind of discussed this already at the second, October 2nd meeting for, yeah, and the November 9th meeting, there is a provision in there if the council is unanimous in regards to the ability to vote on that tonight. You can pass the ordinance as it is tonight, but you'll have to vote, you know, ahead of time that you all want to vote on it tonight. Otherwise, this would be an introduction and then at your next meeting on December 7th, you would vote on it at that point in time. In terms of the timing, when those two would, would come into effect, if we were to vote on it tonight, it would take effect seven days after it was published, which I don't have that date written for. So then if you vote on it tonight, it would become effective November 29th. If you wait until your December 7th meeting after it's published, it will become into effect on December 20th. So it's up to the council if you wanted to discuss whether or not you want to vote on it tonight or if you wanted to introduce it and then vote on it on your December 7th meeting.
Any thoughts in the council?
So we have, we would have to have that vote before we even were able to vote on the introduction.
Correct, yeah. So if you want the details on it before you get into the discussion of the vote, I can turn over to Benny kind of over the fine details of the ordinance. You can ask some questions at that point and then maybe you'll decide whether or not you want to put it to a vote tonight or if you wanted to just introduce it and then go from there. Ben?
All right, thank you. So again, just to reiterate, you had, we had a first reading of this ordinance on November 2nd. And then after that meeting, before the public hearing with the planning commission on November 9th, we made a few suggested changes that the planning commission reviewed at the public hearing, to comment on in the public hearing. And then the planning commission recommended approving that, those changes as proposed. So unless you would like me to, I'm just going to highlight the changes between November 2nd, when you had that first reading, and now since we've already gone over the other changes. Greg highlighted them, so I don't need to spend a lot of time on them. But again, we added a section in there to deal with lighted signs in residential zones. The current ordinance does not allow for lighted signs in residential districts. The proposed ordinance would allow for lighted signs with a temporary 45 day permit. And then it has limits, like Greg said, of brightness and flashing, how fast they can flash, and some other factors about leak shielding them from neighbors, neighbors view. So those are the proposed changes in terms of residential and lighted signs. We had one clarification that, about the timeframe for when permits can be updated or reviewed and when they have to be acted on. There's a state statute that requires action within 60 days on most zoning permits. And we refer to that. So we just wanted to clarify that that applies to the current statute or anything that replaces it. If the legislature were to make changes to that statute. I eliminated one conflicting statement in here where we had said that flags could be required to obtain a permit if they're under a certain size in business districts. The intent in the current ordinance does not require permits for flags in business districts and that was not our intent to require a permit. So I just eliminated that phrase that says that it's required there. And then we had the changes regarding the larger signs in commercial, well, all commercial districts and industrial districts. And again, clarified that if you want to have the freestanding pole sign that is 300 square feet, it has to be within 100 feet of US highways 10 and State Highway 371. And so.
Can I, can I, is it open for questions right now? When it pertains to that, was there any discussion on property abutting highway 27?
We did talk about highway 27 running through town. And the decision that we came to, at least with the planning commission and public hearing in our discussions internally, was that we would, we would limit it to just US highway 10 and that. The thought was that the larger signs in a freestanding kind of situation wouldn't be appropriate for highway 27 through town, through town. Where it would apply, because these 300 square foot signs are limited to the B3 district, it would basically apply from just west of Walgreens and where the high school is. So just west of Walgreens would be where the B3 zoning district starts. And it would run east across US highway 10, you know, towards the outskirts of town on that side. So if you, if you were to allow 300 square foot freestanding signs along highway 27, that's where it would be limited to. The proposal is to limit it even further, just within 100 feet of highway.
I think part of the big deal was the speed. Highway 27 through town, it's a limit of 30 miles an hour into B3 and out on 371 at 65 or 70, so that was.
Part of the reason in my mind, and that's a good point, for a larger sign is because it's a faster traffic speed. People don't get as much time to view it. You don't want them to be distracted and looking to the side, trying to strain and see what this sign says at a high speed. And so that's where the larger signs allowed it. If you're at the lower speed, you know, 30, 35 miles an hour, you can read a smaller sign safely, more safely than looking. Thank you. Just the clutter aspect to things too and blocking views and blocking other people's signs and those types of things. So within 100 feet of those two major highways, you could have these larger signs. You could also have them anywhere in those B3 in industrial districts that long as it's attached to the side of the 300 square foot signs. Outside of that area, close to those US highway 10s and highway 371, if you wanted a freestanding sign, it would have to be 150 square feet or less in the B3 district. When you get into the B2 and B1 districts in the more historic parts of downtown, that's how you, when it's go down, actually are not changed from what the current ordinance would say. So that was a change that we made between November 2nd and November 9th. We clarified another section that illuminated signs could be allowed in the residential districts like I talked about. And then the last change was, again, some conflicting language. The current ordinance has a five foot required setback to traffic lines in residential districts for signs. We had inserted a line in there that suggested it would be a zero foot setback, so we eliminated that and just stuck with the five foot setback. Those are the changes between November 2nd and November 9th. The planning commission is recommending the changes as you have them in your act.
Are there costs for the 45 day permit or do you just have to fill it out?
At this point, our sign permits are $30. So presumably, we would charge that unless the council wanted to impose a special fee or no fee for them every permit.
You said the illuminated sign, you have to, if the permit would just work for the year you're buying it for?
It's a 45 day consecutive permit for the year. So it's not as if you can do every Friday. It's 45 consecutive days and it's only.
If you mean 40 year, within a year after. Okay, Steve, what I'm thinking is if you bought one December 20th, you want it to say Happy New Year, but all of a sudden, the first of the year came on, what do you do? Just pull it out?
Well, and that's probably.
Does it carry, that's what I'm asking, does it carry into the new year?
12 months. Yes.
And you'd be limited to purchase it, to have it be permitted for one per calendar year.
Correct.
So that 45 days would overlap the calendar year, but then you could permit, get a permit in the next year. So if you got one in 2015, it overlaps into 2016, but you could get one again in 2016, essentially overlapping in 2017.
So theoretically, you can buy it on December 1st of 2015, you could buy it again December 1st of 2017, the next, the next coming year.
Okay.
If you wanted to clarify that, you might be able to say. Right now says for up to 45 consecutive days in any one calendar year, or in, you know, any one calendar year. You could say in any 12 month period.
That's what I like to hear you do.
Just to make it clear that you can overlap into the next.
They go to January 2nd. Those weren't paid to get a Happy New Year sign up for one day. And I have a question from a resident on the signage, if they own two lots or three lots, would you clarify it to have Tony?
It's not something that we discussed in any detail at the planning, planning commission public hearing. You know, my thought on that is that we would refer back to whether the lot was considered buildable or not by the zoning ordinance. So if you have two lots and they're both something that you could build a house on, then we treat it as two lots. Now, that's just my thought. We haven't completely spelled that out in the ordinance. I do have some potential language we could add if you wanted to try and clarify that, but that's how I would interpret it. You know, if we didn't change the ordinance, I think it would just be an interpretation question. As long as we're even consistent from one to the next, I think that's the main thing. But you can put it down in the written policy or something to that effect to the ordinance.
So I'll just, I'm going to say back to Greg's question earlier, if we want to vote and pass tonight or you want to reintroduce tonight and?
I'm comfortable with voting this evening. We've had it before. And since November 2nd, there were no significant changes, I don't think anything major that I can see.
You know, if we put it off, it's going to affect the red sign because then we couldn't, couldn't come into, back to calling for me if you said.
December, correct.
Which is getting well into upcoming anticipated signs that probably are coming up soon. I would be in favor of doing it tonight.
Tony, what's your thought? Any ideas? I know you've even thought out there.
I'm passing it tonight or?
Yeah.
You can do it as long as you have a unanimous vote. You can introduce it and pass it tonight.
Has this been taken before Paul Reivers?
Yeah, Jason Bushick actually is the sign expert. He reviewed it up until this last set. I don't think Ben had correspondence back from him on his last set of revisions, which this last set of revisions was pretty specific to non-content, if you, if you will, revisions. So I'm not at all concerned about the revisions we've made since Jason approved it. So Jason gave us the go-ahead and he's the voluntary number one guy in the state who is doing these things. So he gave us the green light. And the revisions that we made here were pretty straightforward, size, had nothing to do with content related change of salt. As long as it reads the way you want, I don't have an issue with passing it.
So once again, we need to actually take a vote that we want to just.
Introduce it and pass tonight. That you want to introduce it right and vote on passing it. And then you need unanimous consent to do that and then you vote on whether it will be the sign.
So we would need a motion to, I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Got a motion by Councilman Bushick and second by Councilman Hanson to approve an introduction and passage on ordinance 81. Any discussion?
Does that have to be two votes or one? There were two votes, so it's two.
Two separate votes. I think actually you're here, you're voting that you're allowed to do it in the same night. Then I think you need the motion to introduce, then you need the motion to pass.
And the motion to, may I have it?
Well, right, I think part of the, part of the motion to pass would be any amendments or anything.
You may, you may want to specify that if you're going to make a motion to introduce it and pass it in the same night, that it applies to both chapters 5 and 11 changes?
Right.
So because you'll have two separate votes on chapter 5 or one on chapter 5 and one on chapter 11. Is that correct?
Didn't we already introduce 5 though?
We introduced, well, we introduced.
Well, chapter 11, yeah, chapter 11, they were both introduced on November 2nd. So actually, you're right, no.
11, that's chapter 11.
I mean, 5. 11, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Councilman Hanson. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance number 81-6 series, introduce, men, chapter code, I have one.
Yes.
Motion? Got a motion by Alderman Hercock.
Second.
Second by Councilman Canofla to introduce 81. Actually, for an introduction, we just need a vote, we don't need a, correct?
Do we need to say that it's reintroduced for some legal reason?
That's stated in the minutes to reintroduce. So then, it's been introduced by Alderman Hercock, ordinance number 81 then for passage?
Correct. And if you want any amendments such as the 12 month as opposed to a calendar year.
Was there any other, did we talk about something else that we were doing?
That was the only one that I recall.
I would make that motion with that amendment in it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilman Bushick for the passage of ordinance number 81 with said corrections. Any discussion?
Is it in there now that if you own a piece of, you own a lot and a lot next to you, is that written in here now? So somebody, a gentleman has approached me about that. I just want to know if that's in here. So he's covered if he puts signs up here and signs up here on his lighted lot?
There's no specific language that clarifies that. My interpretation would be that if it's a buildable lot, then you can have, it's two lots for, for sign purposes. And I would be happy to put that into the written policy or we can put it into the ordinance if you'd like.
Well, the thing goes back to the double 40 foot lots, you have to have two 40s to build. So because you've got two 40 foot lots doesn't mean you can have double signage.
Correct.
Correct. If you had two 8 foot lots, fine, but two 40s, you'd need more than 40 or whatever.
And there is some provisions in there for, for lots that are less than today's requirements to be considered. It doesn't mean every lot is buildable.
Right.
So if it met the conditions to be considered buildable in the ordinance, we consider it two lots.
And actually, if you look under the definitions, residential property, this would go to residential, piece of land or real estate consistent of one of our lots or parcels where a residential dwelling and its associated accessory buildings or structures are located. So there's your definition. Where a residential dwelling and its associated accessory buildings or structures are located. So it doesn't really address a vacant piece of land.
In the business and industrial districts, it shouldn't matter too much because there's footage on that case.
What's just a vacant lot?
Take care of it.
A vacant lot, would you build, put a real estate sign on it?
In any district?
All right, well, even in residential. It's a buildable lot for sale.
Right. It's a buildable lot, right? I, I think, I, I don't know, Tony has a thought, existing language plus a written policy is sufficient, or?
You know, you're, you're gonna have issues like this of interpretation, so you can clarify this, you're gonna have ten others that at some point in time is, is gonna have to be in some way, shape, or form interpreted. We can certainly clarify it, um, within the ordinance if you wanna do that now. You know, you, you can vote it down, we can go back to the drawing board on it. You know, we have a definition for residential at least, um, but again, that doesn't really address somebody as a vacant property. So I mean, I think certainly you could have a policy that this is how we're gonna go about it. Be as specific, as specific as you can, obviously is better, so I don't know if that's something you wanna, wanna make an amendment to, to define it, that will leave any ordinance or not.
I think it would be advisable if we did, because it makes it more clear, and if we can just amend it, tonight is not really changing the whole intent of what this ordinance is about, so. I would be willing to amend that, yeah, the description as far as vacant lot, you know.
I, I did have some draft language that we could add to that if you wanted to.
Can you do that, please?
To me, it would be defining the word property, that's how it's referred to in the ordinance. For instance, it says, where a property contains two or less dwelling units, that's everything that follows after that is the regulations for the signs. So we would define property potentially as any lot or parcel of land which is recognized by chapter eleven of the city code as a buildable lot. Tony, would that be, you think that would cover it?
As long as you're okay with then the assumed prohibition that if somebody has a smaller non-conforming lot, can't decide. That's your decision, but yeah, as long as, as long as you'd be okay with that, if that's the intent and that's what you want.
Well, I believe the intent is to not, oh, here's my lot, and it's forty feet wide, and here's one next to it with a different parcel ID number, so I want double the signage. So I, I think we have to be careful that, I have a sixty-foot lot, so are you gonna exclude me from signage? And my house is there.
I, I think you've got a couple scenarios. One is where you've got two lots side by side under the same ownership, and one of those lots is, does not meet the definitions for being buildable. In that scenario, I think you have, we would just treat it all as one property, and they would be able to put signs on either part of that property, that they wanted, any part of that property, they would be limited to the sixteen square feet or whatever the limit is for that district. The other scenarios were somebody owns a standalone lot that's not considered buildable. And I think, you know, to institute what I just said, you know, you said, no, you couldn't put any signage on there, that maybe isn't what you want. Maybe you do want to allow at least some limited signage for a sale sign or whatever it might be.
Well, I think, from my point of view, any, anything you want. Hypothetical situation, my house burns down, sixty-foot lot, I can't build there, I still own it. If I have the desire to put some sort of sign on it, why can't I?
If, if that's the case, if you prefer to just allow everybody that has a separate described parcel of land, we can base it based on a parcel ID from the tax assessor's in our tax office, or we could base it off of. I don't, you'd almost have to do that, if it had, if it's been assigned a parcel number.
Well, my goal is to try to find a way to make this less complicated, not more.
You'd be, you'd basically then be going per lot, I mean, if it's its own lot, instead of per property, it would be per lot.
Per lot, per parcel.
Per residential lot, basically, or parcel, right.
Thinking parcel might be better to clarify that it not applied to lot, that would be my thought. If we said per parcel, then we could just base it off of, as long as it was a legally created parcel or a lot of, a parcel of record. I don't wanna make it complicated either, but I think we've got it, you know, if somebody goes out and splits off a lot and gets a tax ID assigned to it because the assessor's office has to assign one based on their rules, we don't necessarily wanna have that create additional signage. So we would say if it's a lot of record, meaning it was in place and legal before, or some ordinance said it couldn't be created, or was created legally today, so we'd say per legally created parcel.
Don't we have some twenty-foot lots in the older, like, down Mississippi edition? I think some of those lots are only twenty feet.
I don't know.
In the older areas, downtown.
Downtown area? Yeah.
What in the, um, like, south first and second avenue southeast, down by the river? I think some of those down there are like twenty-foot lots, so if you go by the lot, you could.
I'm not really concerned, I guess, the intent, if you own two side-by-side lots and one happens to be too small to build on, I don't think that's a concern because you're gonna get your signage on that lot, because you own a lot next to that. To me, the, the question comes up more from somebody owning an individual lot, and that's all they own, and it's not buildable. Are we gonna say they can't put any signage on it? And if we want to allow signage, I think we have to basically just say, if you have a legally created parcel, it's assigned its own parcel ID, and you're allowed, you're, you're put it, sign.
Well, I think the plan, at least in my mind, was to be less restrictive, um, have less rules. And John, you have some sort of problem there, is that you guys?
Well, I was, I, in trying to find a simpler answer, um, I was just looking at the definitions, and we have property defined as something with a, you know, residential property specifically is defined with a dwelling and/or accept, and, and associated accessory buildings. If you look at the definition of site, site is just the plot of a parcel of land. So if you change from the, the definition to say where a site contains two or more units or less, then it doesn't find, because you're saying or less, so I mean, I, less could be zero, and site doesn't include a dwelling. But then you're looking, then every single parcel could get its, a lot of amount of sign. So like, the instance, I think, we talked, if you had two forty-foot contiguous parcels and you had one house in the middle of it, you'd have two sets of, of, of a lot of signage, which.
And maybe you want that, I mean, that, that's completely up to you.
It doesn't, not like they can combine them, so if they wanna put a sixteen square feet on one property and go twenty feet down a block and put the other one on the other one, it's more power to them. I don't see it being a big issue, but.
Does that make sense, if they're changing that?
I, I think if you would do that for it to fit on, on definition, definition of site, then you would just, you would take or combination of contiguous lots or parcels of land, because then a plot or parcel of land. Like a roof-to-functioner unit or a unit though. I mean, I don't think you want the combination of contiguous lots, because once you do that, then it's an either or, then, then it's either you can use it as a combination or a single, so. So I, I'm, I'm back to, I, I like Ben's more of all.
Interpretation?
Well, I, you know, either its own separate legal description or its own parcel. I mean, if you don't care that it's a buildable lot, and hey, they have, they have a lot, and who cares how big it is, we're gonna give them their own square footage, because that's what you wanna do, you, you're more inclined to allow signage, you can do that, that's completely your decision, so it's just a matter of what do you want? And then I think we can certainly go to basically then it's just any parcel of any lot, any parcel of land, designated it as its own separate unit, legal separate.
You know, once again, if somebody has forty-foot or sixty, and they wanna sell it after their house burns down, how can we tell if you can't put, fail to sign?
Oh, right.
That just doesn't make any sense, that's too restrictive.
Yep.
So it's got a parcel ID, you're paying taxes on it, so you're the right.
I think pretty much even non-conforming lots are gonna have a parcel ID, as far as I know.
Yes.
Well, you think that that's something to pay taxes off from?
Yeah, so that would, that would be fine.
How too many people will buy a non-buildable lot, like this six, this all burns down, yes. You're not gonna put up a new home there, because it's, you know, the people who will buy that property are Jason homeowners. So if you put up a sign, not too many people are, are going to buy the place that they could just look at.
So do we like the parcel ID?
I'd like, I'd like that, because once again, I don't think that's too restrictive, and, uh, you know, how many issues are going to be caused by that, very few of them.
So we're gonna need that then not just under the illuminated signs, but under the, under the residential signage. Right, Ben?
Yeah, right, I, I'm thinking, are we still talking about the definition of property, that we've got in general?
I, I think what, what the council has indicated is they want to be more lenient and allow the signage, so if it's basically has its, a parcel ID, if it's, if it's a lot, whether it's conforming, whether it's a housing or not, they want that lot to have its own signage, a lot, a lot, a lot, right?
That's, that's what I'm saying, but I don't know the rest of the people I think.
Well, I've revised my proposed definition based on that discussion.
Okay.
I have it as property would be any lot or parcel of land which has been legally created and has been assigned a separate parcel identification number. I guess I edit, well, I don't know if I edit, but I, I have the phrasing in there about legally created.
Yeah, do we need legally created?
My understanding is if you go create and ask the auditor's office for a separate parcel ID on something, and it meets, it's recordable, it meets their definitions, it doesn't have to mean zoning, but. So if somebody just went in and said, I wanna create four parcels on a lot.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to say that, we can just say that has been assigned a separate parcel.
I would amend my original motion with, um, that, change the definition.
So I think we're, we're adding a definition, are we not?
Adding a definition.
Adding a definition of property.
I'll follow to. Motion was made by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilman Bushick. It's up, ordinance eighty-one, six series, with said amendments. Discussion?
That's the last question I have, is everybody else satisfied with charging thirty dollars for a temporary permit?
That's something that has to be, like, you mentioned.
Pre-schedule.
That has to be scheduled time, that can be adjusted.
Okay.
And do we do that?
Either the first or second meeting in the assembly.
Any other discussion? Ordinance call roll.
William.
Yes.
Hercock.
Yes.
Wiltgren.
Yes.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hamfler.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Bushick.
Yes.
Canapla.
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance eighty-one, six series summary publication. So. Motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Alderman Hercock, approve ordinance eighty-one, six, eighty-one, eight, six series summary publication. Discussion?
That's just a short version.
Ordinance call roll.
Hercock.
Yes.
Wiltgren.
Yes.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hamfler.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Bushick.
Yes.
Canapla.
Yes.
Boyum.
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance number eighty-two, six series, men's city chapter code eleven, time regulations, correct? This is the second amendment of, uh, ordinance number eighty-two. Essentially what this does, it removes all of the, um, requirements or the, uh, the rules pertaining to signs in chapter eleven and refers back to chapter five point three over the signs. So tonight, we'd be looking at approval of chapter eleven, so that we could remove those requirements out of chapter eleven and put them into five point three where they, where they belong, so all the sign information is in one location. What's the motion, the council?
Move that we adopt ordinance number eighty-two.
I'll second.
And a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Wiltgren, to approve ordinance number eighty-two, six series, discussion? Hearing none, ordinance call roll.
Wiltgren.
Yes.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hamfler.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Bushick.
Yes.
Canapla.
Yes.
Boyum.
Yes.
Hercock.
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance number eighty-two, six series, eighty-two, eight, six series summary publication, ordinance number eighty-two, six series, sign, regulations. What's the motion, the council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Canapla, for ordinance number eighty-two, eight, six series summary publication. Discussion? Ordinance call roll.
Zilka.
Yes.
Hamfler.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Bushick.
Yes.
Canapla.
Yes.
Boyum.
Yes.
Hercock.
Yes.
Wiltgren.
Yes.
Mr. President, um, just briefly, if I could.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank Ben and Tony and staff, all the work they put into it, that was a long, tenuous process, and, uh, I appreciate the time and effort that that took.
Sorry for the interruption.
Not a problem. Accept the recommendation of interview committee, appoint Richard Frye, Gulf Course manager. Richard, John?
I would say that we're, uh, we're making good progress at the, at the Gulf Course. Uh, we interviewed, uh, seven candidates for the position, we received twenty-one applications for that. Interviewed those, those seven individuals, and I would say all seven were very, very good candidates, and impressed with all of them that, uh, that took the time to meet with us. Three staff members reviewed the, the applications to move forward onto the, um, the interview process. We had five staff members, uh, or five individuals now, internal staff, five individuals, that actually interviewed those seven candidates to make our recommendation to, to hire Rich Frye for the, for the position. Rich is tentative of looking at starting December fifteenth, depending on if he can get, uh, housing and such in the, in the area. So tonight, we would be looking at approving the, uh, the hire of Rich Frye, uh, as soon as he is available, contingent upon passing, you know, the physical, the background investigation, and drug and alcohol testing.
I'd like to add, I think the, the reason with the interview committee that Rich, uh, stood up was that he had very good, uh, experience both on, on the course and in the clubhouse. He was promoted from, from his current course, which is a city-owned course in Valparaiso, Indiana, to, to the general manager for the entire operation of the, of the course there, from within.
Multiple courses?
Multiple courses, two courses, they have an eighteen-hole and a twelve-hole course, and they have, they have two courses. So he has, um, very good experience in, in doing that, and he, he impressed us with his knowledge of the, uh, of those operations and his excitement for, for it, too, so.
So whatever man decided to come to our.
His wife.
Wants, honestly, wants to, wants to be a part of this community, so, did his research.
So his, uh, people skills, like, pretty good.
Very good.
Very good, yeah.
What's the motion, the council, on my recommendation?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the interview committee to appoint Richard Frye.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Wiltgren, to approve their recommendation of Richard Frye. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All in, same sign, motion carries. Airport Commission Recommendation Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety-one, acquisition of property. Dylan Joseph Nancy Burr property, LLC, run rate protection zone, and offer a statement there, right?
Tonight, in front of you, we have a resolution to acquire some additional property out of the, out of the airport. If you recall, uh, we've recently purchased, uh, property in the north and south sides of the airport, up here for our cross. If you recall, uh, we've recently purchased, uh, property in the north and south sides of the airport, uh, up here for our crosswind runway. This evening, we're looking at acquiring some part, property on the northwest side. Uh, basically, it's the runway protection zone of the, of the main runway. So we're looking at acquiring that property, uh, for Mr. Burr. We worked with Mr. Burr, uh, over a number of months to, uh, to purchase that. And despite, you know, the property owners' splendor with the, the negotiating firm, we were able to come to an agreement on the price, uh, which we feel is a fair price for the, for the property. Um, the city's component of it, because there is a, uh, state, federal, and local match on it. The city's component, or share I should say, is four thousand fifty-three dollars. The county would also, uh, pitch in that same dollar amount. Uh, but the total purchase price for the property, uh, is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents, plus an estimated twenty-five hundred dollars in closing cost to be charged to the airport improvement fund.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a motion by Councilman Gushick, seconded by Councilman Canopla to accept the airport commission recommendation. Any discussion?
Mr. President, um, Mr. Burr was in my office today expressing great displeasure that parts of the process that, really concerned me and, um, he didn't sound really happy about it.
I, I spoke to him as well today to, um, express the same, um, and he wanted us to, to be aware of that. But in the end, he, um, is agreeing that this is of good interest for the city. He doesn't want it to be a hindrance to city operations, especially with the, you know, the concerns to this. Um, and that acknowledged that moving forward, that it was very helpful that he communicated with the city, um, to do this and ask for some, to assure that, that they, that the negotiating firm that was contracted by the engineering firm, um, so kind of two steps away from, from us, that, that it wasn't his and that he's, he's moving forward with this, so.
And I would add that he did not have issues with Mr. Kimmer today, but beyond that.
Yes, and, and I, I'll be in touch with, uh, both the engineering firm as well as the, um, the negotiating firm to, to get some of the details on it. Because obviously, we want to make sure that everybody around any of the city parcels and city property and city, uh, stuff is, is satisfied with what our operations are out there.
Any other discussion? Resolution, call roll.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdrin?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance number eighty-three, six series, Men City Chapter Code Shade Tree Disease Control, introduce, correct?
Ordinance number eighty-three, uh, as you mentioned, Mr. President, is the Shade Tree Disease Control. Um, it pertains to various, um, diseases that we've been seeing in deciduous trees. Whether it's Dutch elm disease, oak wilt, Emerald Ash Bore, um, in here, the ordinance introduces or, um, indicates who is going to be the, the inspector for that particular, um, ordinance and control of the, of the diseases. So we're naming, uh, myself or designee in the street department to inspect the trees on an annual basis. Um, it declares if it's a public nuisance, so those three, um, diseases that I indicated, Dutch elms, oak wilt, as well as Emerald Ash Bore currently are indicated as a nuisance to the city. It gives, uh, the city staff, the, as well, the city staff that's designated as the, uh, tree inspector, the ability to go on the property to mark trees that are, uh, diseased. And then it requires those individuals to remove the tree within the designated time or the city will go in and, uh, remove those and, and, uh, assess the property for that, uh, for those costs incurred to, to remove the tree. So, um, tonight, basically, we're, we're looking to, um, move forward with our disease elm and, and oak wilt and Dutch, or excuse me, Emerald Ash Bore, to make sure that it doesn't spread throughout the city. It gives us a little bit more, um, power and control to be able to, uh, go after those. And it is along by state statute that, um, that we can do and pass this ordinance.
Do we have a motion to introduce?
I will.
Has been introduced by Councilman Lowdrin.
Second.
Planning Commission Recommendation, preliminary plat, Bell Gardens Edition Earl Lemire, approved.
At the planning commission on, uh, November ninth, we had a, a public hearing for the Bell Gardens addition. Uh, as you can see here, this, uh, these are the two buildings curbed by Community Services. Uh, Herb Road Drive is going east-west before it, it comes around and looks to the north. Uh, the, the plat consists of three parcels currently, uh, the way it was presented. The planning commission recommendation is to combine lots one and two, um, as lot number two currently does not have a principal structure on it. It's just a secondary or accessory structure. So the recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat of the construction, uh, contingent upon lot number one and lot number two, as shown, uh, be combined, uh, until at some point, if a primary structure gets built there, then you would be able to split them at that point. But tonight, we'd be, be looking at approving this plat with lot one and two being combined.
Was there any discussion with the owner on that?
There was. Um, the owner indicated it was, it was an accessory structure at that time. Um, since the planning commission meeting, we have not had a discussion with the owner regarding that, that parcel. Um, but based on the, the reaction at the, at the meeting, he was, he was, uh, acceptable to, to the fact that if there becomes living orders in that accessory structure, he'd be able to split that off, um, at that point in time.
What's the wish of the council on the file approval?
I make a motion to approve it.
Second? And a motion by Councilman Gushick, seconded by Councilman Hanson to approve the preliminary plat with the combining of lot one and two.
Contingent against our three mil R one C. Currently, it's, it's, it's at, uh, V three and the rezone will be, that's your next action.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Rezoning request, Earl Lemire, approved.
At that same public hearing on the, on the ninth, uh, Mr. Lemire petitioned to the, uh, to the planning commission to have the, lots one and two that were shown that are, would be, most be combined, to be rezoned into R one C. Currently, they're zoned as V three, so a business district, um, and he'd like to move that down to an R one C, so something that is more restrictive in terms of what can be constructed there. The planning commission did recommend approval of that, uh, of that request. And so tonight, we would be looking to approve, um, that request to be rezoned to R one C.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Second. And a motion by Councilman Hanson, seconded by Mayor Zoka to approve the rezoning request. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety, consent to change of control cable franchise, without city manager.
Again, uh, in renegotiating our franchise agreement with Charter, they have been acquired by another company. They're requesting that the city has a resolution, so we transfer that authority to the, um, new owners. And the agreement there determines as who the charter, so.
What's the wish of the council? Nobody likes their cable bill? So moved.
No, yeah.
And a motion by Mayor Zoka, seconded by Alderman Hercock. Approve resolution twenty fifteen dash ninety. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by, uh, resolution, call roll.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Lowdrin?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Water rate, Consider Public Works Director?
Um, just wanted to talk a little bit with the council tonight regarding, uh, water rates. Uh, you know, at our water plant, uh, we've kind of have, we, we have a CIP in place in terms of what we propose to construct over the next six years. Um, we also have, obviously, our, our Water Improvement Fund, but we recognize that, um, those funds aren't necessarily going to be able to cover all the improvements that we, that we're proposing at the, at the plant. The facility was constructed in nineteen seventy-two and roughly, you know, every twenty years, we're, we're looking at replacing the media and such. And we're getting to that point right now. Uh, we did hire a consultant to design the new media, uh, over there at the, at the plant. But over the next six years, we're anticipating about ten million dollars worth of work to, uh, to occur over at the, at the water plant. And so I just want, you know, a, a consensus from the council to direct staff to, to look at ways so we can make sure that that, uh, fund is solvent and stays in the, in the black. Um, we'll present those, uh, those findings to the council at a, at a future date. Um, but it's something that we have to, to recognize that it's going to be coming, uh, up somehow to, to be able to pay for it. And we'll try to figure out the best way to, to do that.
You know, and as presented earlier in the board session from David Chong, the PFA options, Public Facilities Authority, they, they do require that you do some facility planning in advance, um, and then apply to be on a list, or Public Area Relations List, PPL. Um, so we, you know, we, there's minimal cost, or it's minor costs to doing that. I mean, getting a facility planning has a cost to it, but, um, if you're on the list, I think it opens the door for some possible lower, low interest financing option for, for water with sewer improvements, uh, oil and water state running. So, um, it would be a, um, uh, feasible decision to make and we'd be looking at that as well. Uh, however, there, there's very little way that you're going to be able to do these improvements without having some debt service applied to it. And the way that current rate structures are, are established, um, they would be falling short of paying for that future debt service. Um, this way, we're, we're buying down, we've gotten the debt service limit. And we're kind of at the point where we need some future, further improvements, especially in the, in the water plant, so.
All right, anything? So you want a motion to direct staff to research options for water rates? So Water Improvement Fund continues to stay solvent, present, uh, recommendation to option at a future meeting for consideration? Correct?
So moved. Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Boyum, seconded by Councilman Gushick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Do we, Council President, so if we go back to page twenty-two, which was item B on the agenda, the council approved the resolution, but, um, there was no motion giving us authority to prepay, um, for the property when, when we're ready to do the closing typically, any checks have to be approved by the council prior to release. So if the council would, um, act on a motion to allow us to prepay the cost of the, of the property at the closing, um, before it comes to a council meeting, and then it'll come to the council meeting once the check is done.
So moved.
Second.
Got the motion by Mayor Zoka, seconded by Councilman Canopla to approve the prepay on the acquisition of the property from the airport at closing. Any else, any other?
No, that would be a thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Anybody got any reports?
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Radhika and myself attended Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference in Alexandria last Thursday and Friday. It was the first one I've ever attended. I thought it was extremely interesting. We had a lot, got a lot of great information. I'm on the Board of Directors and two things that were discussed, um, the fact that we need to recruit, uh, more LGA cities. And another thing had to do with the, uh, state rulemaking petition to amend or repeal the state's new water quality rules related to rivers and streams, uh, which I guess are quite strict and, uh, they could be coming back to ask cities, uh, based on what they receive or the size of the city, um, for more dollars, uh, which wouldn't be a lot, a large amount for local officials to participate, um, for the lawsuit because otherwise, if they did file the lawsuit last year, they wouldn't have enough if there was an appeal. So that may be coming, uh, down the pipe. And then, uh, for the rest of the meeting, uh, one thing that they're pushing the hardest for is LGA and the fact of what, uh, that would do to communities if the, uh, if they would cut LGA or remove it completely, which they said is a possibility, and I believe half of our general fund budget is.
More than half.
More than half is LGA dollars, so you can see, uh, what would happen to us. And we also have graphs and numbers that shows that, uh, when LGA went down, uh, property taxes went up and vice versa. So I would suggest as council members that you lobby them to, I believe they are going to propose a forty-five, approximately a forty-five million dollar increase to go to the levels of two thousand and three, or two thousand.
Yeah, that would, that would bring it back to, uh, the two thousand and three certified levels. Um, however, the two thousand, which were the highest that it had ever been, um, however, they cut that to two thousand and three, what the certified was, they actually didn't pay that. Oh, and two thousand and two is, is currently about the highest, uh, at that. Um, LGA is an extremely important, uh, revenue tool for local governments. It is, you know, we don't, only for very specific projects, you have the authority to do, uh, sales tax levies. It was created to be a general appropriation to cities. There is nothing that it was specified that it had to be spent on. Um, you know, it's, it's to help balance so that every community in, in the state of Minnesota, regardless of their property tax, uh, value, can, uh, provide, you know, all the services that the local, you know, government, um, and the council, you know, deem necessary. So, you know, it, it varies on how, how communities utilize it, um, you know, but it is hugely important for us. And they won't really emphasize and give us strategies at the meeting to move forward and to communicating with our state representatives and senators to ensure that they are aware that we, uh, of the need that it provides and the, and, and good things that it provides for our communities and to ensure that it, it moves forward. Um, you know, there are some, some communities are on the metro higher, very high, wealthy communities that don't receive any LGA and they have some votes that, you know, are people that don't want it there and, um, you know, it's unfortunate because if they, if those people lived in our communities, they wouldn't be saying the same things about LGA. If they really knew what it was, what it could bring back to those communities, so.
And there is a proposed resolution that we can come and get whatever we want to support it, they asked that, uh, we do that, so. And then also, uh, during June, we got to hear Rebecca Otto speak and, uh, she asked some things that excited John a lot more than me because he's a lot more technology-wise than I am, so.
Yeah, she, uh, she had got a grant, uh, for nineteen thousand dollars, but works with the University of Minnesota and a graduate student to put together a, um, kind of a facilities map for water and sewers, um, in, in cities in Minnesota to kind of show how these communities are sitting in terms of the age of the infrastructure and then the operating, you know, revenues and expenditures that, that those communities have with that, with that set of infrastructure funds. Um, and it's kind of enlightening to see that, uh, it, it had different colors and, you know, green was good, red was bad. And there was a lot of red on the map, so it, you know, it's kind of close to show that, that, uh, how other communities are comparing. And credit to Little Falls, they actually have some very good, um, all the work that we have been doing to help replace some infrastructure that's in the ground and bringing that up to date has, has put us in a probably a better position than the, than the average in terms of that infrastructure. However, it doesn't, it didn't, the one thing I did ask them was to, uh, do things and compare them in terms of rates because there are some communities that, you know, might look like they have some really high, uh, expenditures for that, but that's because they may have taken the efforts to do that, that work, uh, to, to improve that infrastructure to help, helping sustain their communities or that, those needs, so. It was, yeah, right up my alley with, with maps and charts and things.
I'm sure Mr. Kimmon would have enjoyed that too.
I probably would.
I would like to say something, you know, the years we didn't have LGA here was pretty tough. Things started moving once we got it back. I wouldn't like to see that go away again, so it's very important. And, uh, how would I propose to get that microphone working for planning commission, you know, for special meetings and that?
tough. Uh, things started moving once we got it back, and I'd like to see that go away again, so it's very important, and, uh, how would I propose to get that microphone working for Planning Commission, you know, for special meetings and that? Is that something I just bring up to, to you or your office, or do we?
We'll, we'll get it working.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Announcements?
Yes.
I, I happen to have one.
Proud to announce that Kathy White found out today that she is, uh, will be honored as, uh, December Chamber Employee of the Month, and, um, I'm not sure of all the Kathy's duties, or you can probably enlighten us a little more, I know she's an office assistant, um, and she does some billing, uh, so.
Kathy, um, she's typically the first person you see when you come to the city hall, she does her utility billing, um, she's, you know, assists the staff with whatever it is that we need done. She has excellent, excellent customer service skills. Um, she's in a pretty tough position when we work with people that have water bills to pay, don't want to pay them, disconnects, have to be shut off, work with payment arrangements, and she is just extremely good at working with people, um, her customer service skills are outstanding, and she just does an excellent job, like I said, does utility billing, um, helps us, you know, assists, answers phones, and, you know, just works with whatever it is we need her to work with, does health course deposits, um, so, yeah, it's, it's a busy schedule, but works with building permits, van, and, you know, it just, everything we throw at her, she does, so.
So if you're on interview, please congratulate her, it's well deserved, John, and it's quite an honor.
With a smile on her face.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? Any other announcements? Staff? Anything? Chief?
Did, did anyone see the veterans' service at Main Square? They did it at the eleventh minute of the eleventh hour, and they had, uh, Legion, ran the guys off the rental squad, they did a saloon plate taps, we happened to just stop, be there, the second car behind Main Square, and boy, that was really neat to see.
I saw it on the record website.
Yeah, it was, it was super, super cool, and I was really impressed. I didn't remember, I think maybe I remember they did it, but we didn't know what was going on, and, boy, it was impressive, the squad cars were there, and it was really, really something to see. I'm going to make a point to be there next week. Yeah, so that was, FYI, that was really, really nice.
Anyone else? Hearing none? We will adjourn.
That's very good, soldiers. It's very good, soldiers.
Well, I don't mind doing that, as long as we don't, maybe we don't get out.
Our sustain was never intended to get any soldiers. It was designed to honor pieces, and for everybody to work toward pieces. It's become something totally historic itself. I have to ask a question here.
Yep, that doesn't change, you just, this property here is defined. Okay, all right.
Just a quick question, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, am I to understand correctly that every property is allowed forty square feet, residential property, forty square feet of flags, in addition to now sixteen square feet of signage?
You can actually have, don't check yourself, you can actually have fifty square feet of flags, any one flag can be up to forty square feet.
Oh, so every residence can have fifty square feet of signs?
A flag.
Okay, a flags, rather, and in addition, sixteen feet of signage?
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, something I-
Yeah, this won't be effective for, till it's published, I believe.
Right, seven days from-
Or seven days for publication, which I think he said it was like the twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth.
Right.
But yes.
Can you, nowhere in there does it state, other than the ground level, four feet up from the ground, the height of a sign, what about in the wintertime? If a person puts a sign at four feet up and you have a two-foot snowdrift, your sign isn't going to be seen. What about that?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't address that. Uh, it just never came up.
Because it's important.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the ground level changes in the wintertime.
Well, the ground level doesn't change, but, yeah, I mean, I know what you mean.
The visibility for the, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So how, how-
At this point, it's just, it's a four-foot maximum.
So if somebody raises their sign up four feet on top of the snowdrift, it's going to be in violation of the law?
Well, it's a four-foot max, so I guess at this point, that's what we have to do. We, you can always break it up, I guess, as a proposed change, again, at this point.
Well, I, it's not addressed at all.
Right.
And a sign that's at four square, uh, four feet up may go under the snow, in fact, it's on, on some years. So, just so that I'm understanding this correctly, because this would apply to everybody, not just my signs.
Right.